Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of January 2nd, 2024. Please join the Board in a pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting of the Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. We have members of the Board joining us in person here at the Great Hall at Town Hall. We have a member of the Board joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to participate in or join this meeting or observe it may do so by joining us here at the Great Hall at Town Hall, by joining us via Zoom on the link on the website. The Zoom webinar is on the agenda that is posted on the Town website, and we do allow people to participate remotely as well. We may have members that are presenting to us, presenting to us over Zoom as well. And we remind folks that they may also watch us on PAC TV. The channel has changed from Comcast to Channel 9, and on Verizon it remains Channel 47. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. Moving right along, we're going to go to the presentation of the American Legion Post Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on, Lynn.
Thank you. My name is Beth Lynch. I'm the Director of Legion Operations at the American Legion Post 40 in Plymouth. A letter was sent in. I was asked by a veteran at our post that he would like to be part of helping put American flag banners along through the town of Plymouth. In turn, I contacted Mr. Quintle and asked him where I would go with this to make this happen. I called Amy from the chamber, and this is where we are today.
So, I know it says in the letter about how many flags you're going to place out, Beth.
Yep.
About 100?
About 100. They're banners. We'd like them to be posted all through downtown Plymouth, the waterfront if possible, some side streets, by the cemeteries, working with the town, whatever works for the town would work for us.
Well, I want to say I think it'll look great. I know Kingston does it a little bit, and I've always admired that, and I've made it quite vocal, so I'm glad to see that you do it and all the good things that you do do over there.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Board members? Mr. Blitzer?
Hi, Beth. I think it's a great idea, as Dicky said. I know you talked about maintaining, and we talked about that. I know it was in your presentation.
Yep.
About what's going to happen.
I mean, looking for it, I mean, I know it's busy. We were looking to have them up by Memorial Day in May and come down after Veterans Day in November, if that's feasible with the DPW. We want to work any way we can to make that happen.
And my biggest fear from managing a restaurant on the waterfront, if that flag gets tattered, the people will hear about it, so...
Oh, yeah. They're plastic weather tech banners like we had for the 400th, the banners that went up.
But we have a, there's a, they'll keep an eye on and replace as needed?
As needed.
Perfect.
No cost to the town.
Yep. Last thing is, they're going to be, they'll be up all night, obviously.
Yep.
Do they have to be lighted to stay up all night? Is that like a law?
I don't think all night.
Okay, it used to be, probably, so, okay. That's all, so, because like I said, I'm not a veteran. I respect veterans. I have a lot of respect for veterans, and the last thing I want to do is upset a veteran. So I just, I think this is a great thing for our town. We are America's hometown, and I'm so, I'm proud every Memorial Day, I'm proud every Veterans Day for what we do in this town. So, this is great. I really, I really think it is. I don't know what has to be done. I'm sure Derek can probably explain the next, what the process is, so, but anyway, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to licenses and administrative notes. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, one-day licenses for the fill, January 20th, January 21st, March 23rd, April 27th, and April 28th. Do I have a motion, or do you want to take them all in order? Altogether, I mean.
I'd make a motion to approve the five licenses listed on the agenda as a group.
Second? Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Canty?
I vote yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Halm?
Yes.
Thank you, Harry. Change of managers for Batucci's, 110 Grill, and there's three administrative notes. There's no objection, so a motion altogether.
I'd make a motion to approve the change of manager items and the three administrative notes as a group.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Canty?
I vote yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Moving right along to the fiscal...
I'll vote yes, too.
I'm sorry, Harry. I really am. Unanimous, thank you. Moving right along to the fiscal 2025 Select Board Budget. Mr. Brandisi?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Let me start by just recognizing our Finance Director, Lynn Barrett, who's with us this evening for this budget presentation. So, as you all know, this budget presentation, typically we try to have a balanced budget presented to the Select Board sometime around mid-December. As you can imagine, this is another challenging budgets season, so it took us a little bit more time to bring this budget forward this evening. So, I have a lot of information I plan to present tonight. Mostly, most of it's informational. I would ask that the Board may want to consider not voting the budget this evening. If you have any questions, detailed questions, certainly myself, Mr. Brothers, and Ms. Barrett will make ourselves available during the course of the next five days, maybe come back next Tuesday for a more of a formal vote. So that being said, let's just jump right into this. So these are the items I'll cover this evening. We'll go over, we'll start off with the general and the enterprise budget as a whole. We're going to talk certainly what are our drivers, what are our revenues, and then we're going to start to talk about the breakdown between the towns and the school. That always drives a very specific conversation. State aid is still up in the air, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then, like we do every year, just give the folks an update on new growth, excess and excess levy capacity. And then at the end, we'll just discuss what this budget does for our community as a whole. Okay, so you're going to see this slide twice. I think being repetitive is helpful. And so we'll just start from the top. You'll see that what we are presenting this evening on the general fund side is a $293 million budget with an additional $21 million in enterprise for a total budget for the town of Plymouth of $314 million. That's an increase of almost 5%, so 4.9%. But going back to the top, so the town's operating budget increased by $2.7 million or 4.3%. The school department budget increased by $5.2 million or 4.6%. You'll see on the next line that we have our fixed costs. So fixed costs ranges everything from our OPAP liabilities, our pension liabilities, snow and ice, just to name a few. In this year's budget, we included $3.6 million for collective bargaining negotiations. That $3.6 million is embedded in our fixed costs. So our fixed costs rose by 4.2%. Debt service has gone up substantially by almost 13% of $2 million. You'll see the offsets, and then again, I'll just mention the enterprise accounts. Those are a 1-for-1, 0 proposition typically, so they don't really drive as much of a conversation. But again, you can see in total, we have $21 million in enterprise expenses. So just so folks are aware, how do we pay for these bills, right? How do we pay for expenses? So this is the breakdown. Clearly, you can see that 72% of the town's revenue comes from property taxes, both commercial, personal property, and residential. We have about 7% of our revenues come from the enterprise funds. State aid represents about 12%, and then local receipts is about 7% as well, and then other sources are about 2%. So again, the lion's share of how we pay for our expenses, 72% comes from the property tax base. And so again, just more informational, so, you know, where are all our expenses coming from? And so again, there's a lot of fixed costs in here, debt service, fringe benefits, but you can see quite clearly that almost 50% of our budget as a whole, so the entire $300 million budget, almost 50% of that comes from salaries. So our personnel is the major driver, with a close second at the fringe benefits at 22%. So again, this slide's a little bit more of a challenge to read, especially on the board there, so I'll try to go slow. So then when we kind of break down our expenses, these are general fund expenses. So we extrapolated our enterprise funds from here and just focused on general fund expenses. And you'll see that 61% of the overall budget comes from the school department, while the other 39% is from the town. Again, this does not include enterprise accounts. And then you can see on the left side, the breakdown, and I'm not going to go through all of this, but you can see the breakdown in fringe benefits, salaries, debt service, and expenses in comparison of the school and the town. So this is, I think, probably one of the most important slides that we're going to talk about this evening. You can see on the right side of this slide, our expenses broken down. Again, this is the first slide I presented, where the town is $2.7 million increased. Now, this is, this is this year's increase. It's not the entire budget, but this year's budget increase, the town needs $2.7 million. The school needs $5.2 million. The fixed costs are 3.1, again includes that salary reserve at 3.6. Debt service is a little over $2 million, and so on and so forth. You can relax. But on this slide, you can see our revenues. And so as folks know in this room, we can only increase taxes by 2.5% year over year. So that 2.5% based upon last year's operating budget represents $5.4 million. The school department alone almost equates to what we can raise in property taxes. So you'll quickly see how our expenses are outpacing our ability to raise revenue. Every year, we have to budget for new growth. And so we have a slide, we'll talk a little bit more about new growth in a few minutes, but we always budget around $3 million based upon historical averages. Debt exclusion is almost $200,000. And you'll see this year, in order to balance, again, the total new expenditures of $17 million, we are proposing to use $6.7 million in excess capacity. We'll talk about excess capacity in a few minutes as well. So again, on our revenue sides, our local receipts. So our local receipts is the permit revenue that we generate through inspectional services, fire prevention, our beach permits, so on and so forth. So again, a conservative estimate of about $1.2 million. And then we have indirects of $287,000. So again, I'm going to say it over and over, you can see that our ability to raise taxes every year is being outpaced by the growth in our town budget and our school budget. If you just looked at Prop 2.5 and new growth alone, what does that represent? About $8.4 million. The town department, school department and fixed costs is well north of that $8 million that we typically raise, which is why we're recommending to use $6.7 million to share excess capacity. So I'm going to go back one real quick. So state aid, you'll notice that we kept it at the same state aid as last year. The governor's budget comes out at the end of this month, so we wanted to be conservative. We know that we will get at least what we received last year, looking at right now what's happening at the state level with their revenues. And so we are hopeful that when the governor's budget comes out, it'll come out north of what we received last year. And if that were to be the case, the net state aid, we would, we are proposing to break down any new net state aid by the same budget split that exists today. So a 39% would go to the town, and 69, sorry, 61% would go to the schools. Now, you can see, just to help folks understand what that would mean, if we receive an extra $1 million in state aid through the governor's budget, the town will get an additional $390,000, the school gets $610,000. You'd see if there was a $2 million increase in state aid, the town will get $780,000, and the school will get $1.2 million. We are programming those dollars towards collective bargaining. As you all know, all of our collective bargaining agreements are expiring in less than six months from now, so we're programming any new state aid, new net state aid to go towards collective bargaining, in addition to the $3.6 million that we've already set aside. So new growth. So new growth is taxable money. It's, you know, it's new development, new construction, additions to folks' properties. That increases the valuation of the town as a whole, and so new growth is a taxable commodity. You'll see over the course of time, last year we had $5.3 million in new growth, the year before, almost $5.3 million. We had quite a dip in 2022 at about $4 million in 4.4 the year before. So you can see the historical trend. This goes up and down based upon the conditions, the real estate conditions that are out there. So we, Ms. Barrett typically goes conservative and will budget for $3,000, $3 million in new growth, and that's what you find in this year's budget. Based upon what we're seeing for building permits being pulled, we are not expecting to see new growth in the 5 millions. We would be fortunate if we see new growth coming next year at 4 million. What we don't want to see is budget new growth higher than what comes in, because now we have a budget deficit, and we would have to do mid-year cuts. So that's why we budget at a very low number for new growth. So this is the excess capacity. Folks talk a lot about excess capacity. Right now, you can see that we certified how excess capacity this past fall at approximately $8.7 million. That was presented by our Director of Assessing, Ann Dunn. She had stated in early December that we had, again, excess capacity of $8.7 million. Now, last year was $9.2 million. Just keep in mind, we had to use $2.8 million last year in the budget to balance the budget. This year, based upon the $6.7 million we are recommending to use this year, we would, if everything was improved as presented this evening, we would leave the annual town meeting with approximately $2 million remaining in excess levy capacity. Excuse me. So some of the things that this budget does, and I'm not going to read all these things to you, but a lot of what's built in today's budget will go ahead towards achieving the goals and priorities set by the Select Board this past summer. As you know, effective the summer of '22, the Board comes together through a planning process and develops annual Board goals and objectives. So these are some of the goals that this budget will accomplish. We plan to create a crime analysis unit, which was set forth back in August, the expansion of the mental health condition program, the drug recognition program, just to name some of the, some of the items on the public safety side. On the environment side, we continue to expand our electric vehicle fleet. We just created Energy and Environment Department. We will work with the Conservation Committee, Water Conservation Committee, on some of their recommendations that will come forward this spring. We will continue to work on the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, both on Camelot and over at the airport, and then Climate Action Plan is progressing as well. So financial planning, one thing I'll talk about in the ensuing slides, we have set aside $0.5 million for the Nuclear Mitigation Stabilization Fund. This money will be used to help acquire land when Holtek decides to sell their parcels off over the next seven to 10 years. We have put $0.5 million towards our Facility Maintenance Stabilization Fund as well. We have set aside $1.5 million towards our infrastructure for our pavement management program. So that's $2.5 million that we are recommending to use from the excess capacity that will commit to some of our long-term financial planning as well. Some other items, so we plan to bring on a communications manager. We know that town meeting members have longed for the town to really push forward with communications with our community. An online bill payment program will be implemented in hopefully an agenda management system as soon as we find the right tool. We continue to move forward with our records digitization program, our Summer Impact Program, focusing on the downtown area this coming summer. Cybersecurity has posed a significant threat to every municipality across the nation, so we expect to hire a cybersecurity manager in this year's budget with additional cybersecurity measures as well that our IT director is working on. And then succession planning. So the chairman, Mr. Quintle, talked a lot at the beginning of our October town meeting about succession planning, so we built that into this year's budget, both at the police level, Health and Human Services, our Planning Director, and our Energy and Environment Office, all building out succession planning. So when these longtime employees decide to move to Florida, we have somebody to take their place. So what else does this budget do? So again, like I just mentioned, we strive to achieve the Board's goals and priorities. This budget fully funds the school department's operational needs and requests, which we think is important, at a 4.8% increase. This budget commits an additional $1.5 million towards roads. This budget commits $0.5 million towards facilities and land acquisition at the Holtek site. It commits to succession planning, as I just mentioned. It commits $3.6 million towards collective bargaining, and just as important, it contributes into the town's general stabilization account with a goal of achieving a 5% level of the town's annual operating budget. So just so folks are aware, it's recommended by DOR that every town has a general stabilization account that meets or exceeds 5% of the annual operating budget. We are not achieving that just yet, but it's in our financial plan, and so this budget strives to meet that objective. So just in closing, very quickly, so as I mentioned before, collective bargaining, we expect those negotiations to begin in the next 30 to 60 days. We've set aside funds into the salary reserve to give us a head start on those negotiations. As I mentioned before, with any new net state aid, we will move that money into salary reserve as well. The, as I mentioned at the onset of tonight's presentation, we're not looking for a vote this evening. We've given you a lot of information to digest this evening, so I would invite any Board member, if you'd like to meet with myself, Mr. Brothers, or Ms. Barrett over the course of the next five days to go into more details of the budget. We are happy to do so. And then come back on January 9th to vote the budget that will ultimately be submitted to Advisory and Finance Committee, which there'll be a joint meeting with A&amp;F and the School Committee on January 16th. So pending any questions, I'm done with my presentation. Again, Ms. Barrett is here, and Mr. Brothers are both here. Collectively, we pulled this budget together for you this evening.
Mr. Canty, then Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, Derek. So, it's going to be in stereo. So state aid, if I'm reading correctly the figures in terms of specifically Chapter 70 state aid, final budget for 2023 was just over $27 million. Then final budget for '24 was $28.2 million, so it was about a $1.2 million increase in state aid then. So if we got a similar increase, then that'd be great, but any, we're putting $3.6 million into salary reserve for collective bargaining plus any of those increases to state aid that we're seeing. I know you said that earlier, but I just wanted to highlight.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So that's, that's the plan moving forward. Again, you know, this is a conservative budget with some of our estimates on state aid and even local receipts and new growth. But yeah, that is the goal, to move that money over to salary reserve when we get a more refined budget from the governor.
And typically, when do we get those figures in? End of January, you said?
Yeah, so typically, the governor's budget comes out usually around the third week of January, in a typical year. So we are, I'm expecting to hear the budget, the governor's budget presentation at the MMA conference, which is on January 19th. So I'm expecting January 19th to be the day.
So I know that the date of town meeting and some of the guidelines and deadlines that are put up because of that require us to make some of these decisions in the dark on numbers like that.
That's right.
Numbers that can make a big difference to our planning, particularly as we approach levy capacity as we're forced to here. So I think we should, we should engage in thinking, particularly with this Charter Review Committee that's working. I know that there's some things in the Charter that establish sort of the meets and bounds of where a town meeting can happen, and there's the town bylaw of specifically when it's going to happen. But do you think, I think, I know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyways, do you think it would be beneficial to be pushing some of these deadlines back so we'd have more reliability in knowing those state aid numbers? I know we can't 100% guarantee when the governor of the Commonwealth is going to come out with their budget, but if it's routinely happening in the third week of January, and we're routinely doing this in the first, second, or second week of January, you know, we could switch that up, right?
It would be extremely helpful, especially in difficult budget years, and as you pointed out, as we push, you know, using up most of our levy capacity, we're going to, we're going to want that information earlier rather than later in future years. You know, we have the luxury right now to have excess levy capacity. It gives us the flexibility, but when we're pushing up against that, we're going to want to know those numbers as we build the budget. And I have to say, the vast majority of the towns in Massachusetts, not the cities, the vast majority of the towns in Massachusetts hold their annual town meetings in May, and they do that for that, for that purpose, to have the governor's budget released, even getting a sense of what the representative of the House budget even looks like. Once you get those two budgets, you have a good sense of where, you know, what your sweet spot is going to be. So I think it would be extremely helpful as we move into future years to be able to, you know, reconsider having our town meeting from April and moving into May. And on the city side, most cities don't have their budget ratification until late May, even early June sometimes. So again, most municipalities are having these conversations much later in spring than we are, so that'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Derek, thank you for the presentation. I know we're under a condensed timeline this year. I just got my budget booked this morning, and I think my colleagues only got theirs in the last couple of days also, but I'll certainly take you up on your offer and the Finance Director to sit down prior to our next meeting next Tuesday. We were supposed to have a joint meeting with the School Committee, I believe, a couple weeks ago, and that was canceled.
That's right.
So that's not going to happen, correct? They're just going to meet on their own?
So the School Committee will, they rescheduled that joint meeting to January 8th, but given the fact that we have a, we are having our joint trifecta board meeting on the 16th, you know, we, working with the chairman, we thought it was just best just to wait the additional week and have that conversation once, instead of having it in back-to-back successive weeks.
Okay, so you did mention earlier, talking about us making, taking a vote next week. If we're going to vote next week, why are we having the joint meeting on the 16th following week?
I'll defer that to Mr. Canty.
So this is the Select Board's recommended budget.
Correct.
So the School Committee has their recommendations. We have our recommendations. So the School Committee has their recommendations, we have our recommendation. That's how it's always played out. And we're giving them also everything that they're asking for, plus. So if they don't like it, that would be an interesting position to take.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Canty. What are your lines? So, I'm sorry, so back to next Monday, they have a meeting next Monday where they're going to discuss this budget?
I don't know what their agenda is. The only thing I know is they have members of the State delegation coming in to make a presentation. That's the extent of their agenda that I'm aware of. There's nothing on their agenda that, in my mind, that there was going to be crosstalk over the School Committee budget versus the town budget.
Okay. If you go back a few slides up there, Derek, I don't know if you can do that, Select Board Goals and Priorities Objective? One more? Right there. So the one that jumps out at me is infusion from state from the millionaire's surtax. Why was that included in there? And is there already communication from the Governor's Office or the State delegation that there's an expectation that some level of revenue is going to come down from that new tax? And so I guess my question is, Lynn, how much would that be, and what can we do with that money?
It appeared, we did get a letter from the Governor's Office to expect a certain sum of money, and it was approximately 50% of our Chapter 90 funds, and our Chapter 90 funds are about 1.6 million, so the figure is 700 and something thousand. So, and it is available right away. The DPW can, and they're basically adding it to our Chapter 90 funds, that's how it's coming to us. So we apply, you know, through them like we would normally for Chapter 90 on certain projects.
So you're going to add it to our current Chapter 90?
Yep.
Bringing that up to almost 2.5 million dollars?
Yep.
So are we just bumping up our contribution to roads? Does it have to be used exclusively for infrastructure? If so, what infrastructure? So what's the plan in year one?
This particular amount is specifically for roads, this amount that came to us from the millionaire's tax to Plymouth as part of our Chapter 90. And as far as what DPW is going to use that for, we would have to have them come in and give you a presentation or something on it. But they're putting it towards their road program that they've already met with you on.
Right, which I'm not opposed to. So this initial revenue coming in from the millionaire's fund will be FY '25 revenue?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And is it possible that there'll be a second bite at the apple in FY '25? Or we're basically going to continue more forward, there'll be one, there'll be one like allotment per year?
I'm not really sure about that. It sounded like it was an annual amount, that's what it sounded like in the letter. I would expect that they would probably do it again next year, but there was no guarantee.
But not twice in a year, right? We'll continue forward, okay?
No.
All right, thank you.
Question.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, Lynn, quick question. Can that money be used for facilities maintenance, to put some money, and we'll put money in that fund too?
Not this particular infusion of millionaire's surtax. It's for Chapter 90, so it can be used for the same eligible expenses that Chapter 90 can be used for.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. All right, so Charlie was getting closer to where I was trying to get.
Get there, John.
So is it to believe that in FY '25 and future years, it's just going to be, we're not going to have the autonomy to do other things with respect to infrastructure? It's just going to be an increased amount in Chapter 90? So basically, it's just going to help us rein our roads in a little bit better?
It's my understanding that the millionaire's tax, and I might be wrong, I mean, to be used towards infrastructure and education. I think those were the two provisions.
But infrastructure has a very...
Right, but I don't know what, so the Governor took whatever that millionaire's tax amount was this year, and they allotted a certain sum of money, not the whole thing, you know what I mean? They said, okay, we're going to spend this much on roads, and this is what Plymouth is going to get. So they might do the same thing for other infrastructure and/or education, and/or the other things that you can use that money for. But this is our first, you know...
I just think that, I know it's the first allocation, I just think that that's something we need to hopefully get more information out of the State delegation as to what the intent is moving forward.
Mr. Blitzer?
One more thing, so if we get another 100 million from them, we can probably get caught up on our roads, so. At 500,000, it's going to be a long time for that 100 million, so it's going to be a good use to put in the roads, so we know how bad they are.
Yeah, and I think to Ms. Barrett's point, we received a letter, $700,000, it was a gift by the state, so we took the $700,000 and we're going to put it towards roads, as just pointed out, and we really haven't any research as to, you know, future dollars on that, but, you know, we can certainly ask those questions.
Mr. Helm?
Uh, yeah. On the millionaire's tax, I do believe, I remember discussion, that it was particularly, the infrastructure that was discussed was particularly, but they're not required to do it, the particular infrastructure was roads, along with schools, by the way, during the whole debate on it. Derek, would you, you mentioned that you were going to talk about, of course, I'm spacing on it, unused levy. Would you explain what that is to people who are watching? Because it's a rather confusing thing, because whereas we have a Prop 2.5 override excess levy capacity actually allows us to increase residents' taxes, and that's what's happening this year, well above the 2.5%. So if you could explain that to people, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, so I'll go back. So as I pointed out, and we'll go to the slide to the left, well, to the slide, but look at the new revenues chart. So the town can raise taxes in two ways, through Prop 2.5, and that's based, again, that's based upon last year's overall budget. You can only increase the overall budget by 2.5%. This past year, that number equates to 5.4 million dollars. And then the other way the town can raise taxes is through new growth. And so that's always an estimate, again, because you never know how much construction's going to take place in a community like Plymouth, we've had a lot of new construction, so we've had a lot of new growth, but that's an estimate. And so what has happened over time, and I think a lot of it is attributed more to the new growth, we've always raised the 2.5%, right? Because you're allowed to do that. But what happens is when you budget, say, 3 million dollars, and you have a, let's see if this pointer works, and you have a number that comes in of 5.3, well, that means that this, you could have raised your taxes by an additional 2.3 million dollars. And what's been happening is instead of raising the taxpayers by an additional 2.3 million dollars, and look, the year before that, you could have raised it by additional 2.3 million dollars as well, what's been happening is that money that wasn't raised falls into here, falls into the excess levy capacity chart, which means this is all, back in, this is probably 2022 maybe, Lynn? Back in 2022, the excess levy capacity, the amount of money that could have been raised over time equates to 10 million dollars. So the town had saved all our taxpayers 10 million dollars back then, and you could see, it dipped a little last year because we needed a little bit more money coming from excess capacity to pay the bills. Last year, we used 2.8 million dollars of excess capacity to pay the bills, and now you see this year, we're proposing to use 6.7 to pay the bills. And that gets back to my point, that the reason why I was starting to use more of this excess capacity, that could have been raised in years past, just wasn't, is because our expenses, which are these four columns right here for the most part, are outpacing our ability to raise 2.5% in new growth. And so we're starting to leach into the excess capacity, which again, was money that could have been taxed years ago, it just wasn't because there was no need to. We're getting to the point now that we need to use that money that we're allowed to raise under the statute. Did that help answer your question, Mr. Helm?
Well, I already knew what it was, so yeah, generally, yeah. Hopefully that helped other people understand that it's, that it enables us to raise taxes above 2.5% pretty much every year. My secondary question on this, we're down to 2 million dollars. I have a second. That, instead of applying that, those growth, you know, the, you know, say, next year, it doesn't come, the new growth comes in at 5 million rather than the projected 3 million being used for this budget. Is there any ability to use that to actually lower taxes rather than hold it in abeyance to increase taxes later?
Yeah, so if we, so say next year, I'll say that, based upon what presented today, and we have successful collective bargain negotiations, and we go into next fall and everything's settled, which is going to be a challenge, but we'll just pretend that happened, and we had additional, we had new growth coming in at 5 million dollars, we budgeted 2 million, 3 million, that extra 2 million dollars would fall back into excess capacity, that would be 2 million dollars that we could have legally raised, but we didn't raise to try to stabilize taxes.
My question though, is could that 2 million dollar difference be used to actually lower taxes in the following year, rather than apply it to an increase above the 2.5%?
The only way to lower taxes is to do an underwrite, which is something that we would be against.
Yeah, I mean, you can use other funding sources to reduce the tax rate, you can't use taxes to reduce taxes.
Okay, all right. Have we, when this budget was put together, was there ever discussion at all about a level-funded budget?
A level-funded budget?
Not level service, not level service, which I'm assuming this is. Is this a level-service budget?
This is a level-service budget with new initiatives, as described through my presentation.
Okay, so a few new things added on to a level service?
That's right.
But was a level funded?
A level-funded budget would mean, it'd mean 17 million dollars in cuts if it was just level funded?
No, I understand what it would mean in cuts, but was it ever discussed?
No.
Okay, thank you. One last question. Since you mentioned in there that the state is considering its aid program to be level-funded, okay, so we may get the same amount that we got last year in state aid. Is there any ability or desire to take a look at the state unfunded mandates and level fund them within the budget? Since the state is potentially level funding their state aid to us, and they give us these mandates, is there an ability or attendant or interest in level funding those items in our budget that are state mandates?
That's a great question. That would be an exercise that would be difficult to go through. You are now having negative implications in public health, public safety, public records, things of that nature. So I don't, I don't, I think we would have such a negative impact if we did something like that, that the community would see in the level of service provided by the town.
Well, do you think that it's an exercise worth taking, though? Instead of just guessing?
You can't do that. So it's an unfunded mandate, there's that meaning, they already know they're not giving you any money. So it's up to us to pay for those things. So it can't be, if you don't do it, you're facing, depending on who's giving you the mandate, the state or the federal government, you could face civil lawsuits, you could face injunctions, you could face the rescission of other state aid as penalties, you could open yourself up to not being eligible for grants. So unfunded mandates by their very nature are like giving someone else a chore that they have to pay for and fund out of their own pocket, and the state and the federal government keep doing them. So the solution to unfunded mandates is to reach out to our state and federal delegation about trying to secure funding for them or to revise them to reflect financial realities. But just sticking our nose up and saying, we're not going to do this anymore, is not a viable solution. If it were, plenty of other communities facing fiscal difficulties would do that stuff all the time.
Of course, I understand that. I understand it, Mr. Canty. Trust me, I understand that, and that's not what I asked. I did not ask, have we examined cutting off the funding of unfunded mandates, but level funding those?
Yeah, you can't do that for the same reason. You can't do that for the same reason. You have to comply with the mandate no matter what it costs. If the cost goes up, you have to go up with that cost. You can't just say, I'm only going to give you 100,000 dollars for mecanical transportation.
I understand, Kevin, but are we sure that when we are dealing with these mandates from the state, that we are not, I don't want to say overfunding them, but aggressively funding them, more than we have to? Do we know that?
Yes.
We know that?
Yes.
Okay. All I'm doing is trying to search for, you know, the, this tax increase is a whopper, okay? We're taking 6 million dollars of our excess levy capacity, and we're applying it to the, you know, to our budget. It's a lot, and I'm, you know, I look forward to meeting with Derek and Lynn to discuss further what may or may not be done within this budget.
Yeah, if I could.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Derek, yes, that's the slide that I wanted. So I added up the last five years of unfunded levy capacity, not including the 2 million for this future year, but I get roughly 37.7 million dollars over the last five years?
Yes.
So if we're, if we had, at that time, had a plan to keep only 2 million in excess levy capacity rather than the figures that are up there, that would have been 27.7 million dollars that we could have spent on things like collective bargaining, on facilities, on putting money towards the Holtek property, on accomplishing some of those other Select Board goals that we're doing this year in prior years, on fixing our roads, on, you know, all those other things, those known issues that we have in the community and other things that need to be addressed, right?
That's right.
So we've made a choice historically to not address known and increasing expenses because, for example, if you don't repair something this year, it tends not to fix itself, it gets worse, and then it costs more money to replace it next year, right? So we are, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think even with this increase that we're seeing, the 6.7 increase into excess levy, we're still going to be at or below the state average for real estate taxes.
Yes, right, we're still, we're currently below the state average for taxes, and so with this, it'd be, it'd be an increase, but we'd still be, I think, below, I don't think we've done the full math on that, but I know we wouldn't be north of the average.
Right. So, but we're addressing known long-term needs in the community and providing services and funding jobs for our employees. We're already having issues with things like retention, things like that. So it's not like we're just spending money willy-nilly, we have specific known needs that we've been not doing as much for a variety of reasons, and we're addressing that, right?
Absolutely, and you know, when you think about it, we've kept the taxes artificially low to, you know, to preserve folks on their financial end, but... you know, to preserve folks, uh, that, on their financial end, but we have a lot of needs. And as you pointed out, 27, we have $27 million that we could have spent over the last four or five years that would have gone towards those needs, and, and we didn't, and we didn't take advantage of the statutory ability to do that. You know, and, and I've said right along that, um, this is a super complicated community. You know, we have a fire department that is only 135 firefighters, we have a police department, it's only 125 police officers covering 104 square miles, we have a DPW staff that is severely, uh, short-staffed, covering 104 square miles with the Fourth Lodge's road network in Massachusetts with a budget the third of the size of our competitors. Um, so there's, my point is, there is not a short list of needs. Um, and so although this budget is difficult for folks to consume, uh, it's something that I think we, we have to really start to think forward where we want to be in the next five, 10, 15 years, um, and this is a, I think is a giant step towards that.
Thank you.
Derek and Lynn, um, thank you for your hard work. We've still got some more work, I'm sure, on this. But just to get on the, the history lane here, the last 10 or so years, we've all heard about NTG, Pilgrim One, the tax revenue going away, and what was that, 9, 10 million dollars a year? Okay, so the tide is hitting the pavement. We've all heard that. We did have, uh, outlined that first budget, I think, was a little different than this one. Um, there would have been layoffs, um, and it would have started, um, you know, the town versus the school side, you know, what were one community. And I said to myself, when I started to loo- look and listen to some of it, laying off, um, firefighters, police officers not filling positions, you can't run a corporation without raising the income every year, it just doesn't work. And I've been saying this for the last several years, this town's exploding. And I know everybody has a comment on that too, and an idea, "Well, I'm gladly around every day, I'd love to hear them all." We've tried them all, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, it's just simple truth. And I said to myself, "Is it really worth it? Are we doing, are we doing any justice by not using that?" I said, "Maybe, and Kevin agreed, maybe we need to look at this a different way. Maybe we oughta, uh, put, uh, police and firefighters." I'm not gonna go out there, 'cause you know whose names are gonna be on the funny papers? It's gonna be ours. As soon as something happens in the world we live in, that's exactly what's gonna happen, no matter where it might be. And it's, it, the way the budget processes work for a lot, many times in the town's history is, is the schools and the town, and it goes to town meeting, and it, it shouldn't have to be that way. So we rethought that, and we, like Derek said, and like I think Kevin mentioned tonight, we put in everything that they asked for. By the same token, we have to put in what we need on the town side, and that's what we've done. So this sends back another message to, I don't know, it was two weeks ago, when I said, "The town does very poorly in attracting commercial development. They got, we gotta change our names, the way we do business, and our reputation, 'cause it's awful." The people that call me that I've never even, you know, met until they're yelling at me on the telephone or catching me in the hallway, "Are you Mr. Quinto?" Well, it depends who's asking, no. Uh, yes, and some of it's legitimate, and some of it, you know, you gotta sift through it. But, um, that's why I've called for a meeting of, um, Economic Development Foundation, uh, a real sit-down into what's wrong, why we're failing, 'cause we shouldn't be. And every bit of that'll help. I think we had $5 million in new growth, I think 80% of it's probably condos, and you know what? You need condos. You need them in the right areas, and you wonder what makes the traffic. Well, I can tell you, it's not the commercial development, at least not most of it I've seen. So we have to change our ways, we have to listen, and we have to work with, uh, businesses to, to, to come to the town, you know? And it, it is a different budget, it is a different way of thinking. And, and you know what? Let's give it a whirl, because that's what it should be. And I'm proud to say that last year, the last contract, whatever it was, three years ago, our town fires and everything, um, we repaired a lot of things that were wrong on the town side, whether it be in this building, um, the police department, fire services, there was a lot of stuff that was backwards, and we straightened it all out in a lot of, lot of language, steps, you know, different steps, you started here in 2000, you started here in 1989, then the same people were sitting across from each other, it was crazy. We cleaned it all up, and I hope, and I'm committed to doing the same for the school department and the school teachers this year. Uh, I think they really deserve it, and I'll, I'll stand with yous to make sure that we get you where you should be. That's the way we feel.
Thank you, Chairman Quinto. If this room was empty, I would say the same thing, uh, that I'm gonna say, so I'm not trying to... When I got on the board, uh, this is my third year on the board, and it was an eye-opener when I got on, all the things that we had to, uh, to correct. There was problems everywhere, and, and I used to hear, "Well, that was from before, that, but it's a problem, we gotta fix it." And that's what we've been trying to do in my, this is my third year now, just trying to fix the problems to make Plymouth a better town. Let's start with the schools first, because we need to, to, to keep our schools funded. It's not like it was 30 years ago. There were so many resources they need, which is why their budget is so high. All the different, the autism, the special needs kids, very important, and quite frankly, I got a lot of friends that have special needs kids, and the mainstreaming of the kids is the best thing that's ever happened. I love it. And there's all kinds of programs out there. So we need to retain our teachers. Our teachers are so important, our schools are so important. If anybody knows, a, a quality town has quality schools, and it's as simple as that. In working in the court system for 28 years, I can tell you, Kevin can re- reiterate this, the common denominator, one of the common denominators of people, criminals, and, and is lack of education. Because they get out of school, they're going nowhere, they get in trouble, and they just continue in the system. We need to educate our kids, so when they get out, they can go to college, they can go to trades, and they can be productive. 'Cause if not, they're gonna come back into your neighborhoods, and the crime will go up. So schools are so important, everybody has to understand, and it costs money. It costs money, okay? But, you know, if you wanna make money, you gotta spend money. It's, it's simple, that, that analogy. Police and fire, I, we, we can't get police, 'cause of the disrespect out there for the cops. So what do we do? Police, fire, DPW, last contract, we, we get a bump. And I, hopefully the next contract, we're gonna be able to do, do the same thing. But we did it, not because, we, they deserved it, we, they're still about 75%. We were lo- losing so many employees, and every employee that we lose, it hurts the town, it costs money, it costs us money to retrain these people, and, and that's what's been happening. Our roads, our roads, uh, and now we're paying attention to them. We, uh, you know, we, we, we're putting money away, half a million or more every year, we, we've decided, we're putting that away, and we're gonna, it's gonna take a while, but we're gonna fix the roads. We can only do, believe it or not, if we had 4, 120 million, we couldn't do all the roads, because we, they don't have the manpower, they don't have the, the paving companies couldn't do it. It would still take years to do it. But we have to do 10, 15 miles, whatever the DPW director can, can handle. That's what we need to do every year and fix it. We need to fix that problem. When I ran, I toured the fire stations, 'cause I wanted to see the shape of our public buildings. And I'll be honest with you, I, I was appalled at what I saw. And first, the first thing I found out was, there's no, at the time, there was no custodians working fire stations. It was the, the new station in, in Plymouth, which is beautiful, I wa- I toured it, beautiful, epoxy floor, and I went with the chief, I went with the, the, uh, Brian Barawanath, uh, I had a couple other people with me, and I said, "This place is beautiful. How are you gonna keep it clean? Who's cleaning it? The three men that work the station are supposed to clean this." I said, "Okay, they can take care of their bedrooms, the kitchen, but they're gonna take care of this downstairs, all this, that's heavy stuff." They now have, I believe, custodians that float, and they do, they do cleaning, and, and I'm hoping, and I'm gonna check into that, hopefully that program is going well. But I saw, I toured the seven stations, I saw West Plymouth, which is gonna open up very soon, what I saw there, I, I, I was horrified. Those guys were living, but you know what? Guess what? Anybody that drives by and says, "Oh, look at that monstrosity," guess what? They need it, they deserve it, okay? They need to be safe, they need to be, get, get off the truck, put their equipment into the cleansing area, and be able to go to their quarters, and, and not have all the contaminants on them. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, state-of-the-art, and it's, and it's gonna be there for years. Uh, uh, I went down to Manamet next, asbestos science. These employees were, were living with this, going to work every day with this. And I said, "Man, we gotta, we, we can't, we gotta fix this, this is outrageous." I went to Pine Hills, which is one of the newest stations. The vents, there was things that weren't getting done, and we, it got addressed, it's being done now. But what I'm saying is, we need to, we need to put money into our facilities, we need to put money into, uh, uh, infrastructure roads, and we need to get our employees paid appropriately, uh, so they can service the residents, okay? And I'm all for that, and if, if it costs a little more money, so be it. If you tell me that's wasting money, uh, uh, you know, I, I'd like to hear from you, because, you know, we need this, we need, like I said, I'll leave it with, it takes money to make money. So I hope everybody, at the end of this, is happy with the budget and supports this town. We have a great town, I love it, okay? I'm sure there's gonna be some tweaking, uh, but we got a great team over here, I trust these guys immensely, okay? I, I've been working with Derek since, since he got hired, and Lynn is awesome, and Brad, uh, and, uh, we got a good board, so everybody's fought Plymouth. Anyway, we gotta work together, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? And, uh, I'll open it up to...
Good evening, everyone. So I, I am, as, as, as some of you know, or some of you don't, I'm Tom Pinto, Precinct Two. I'm here speaking tonight, though, as president of the Education Association of Plymouth and Carver, and I'm here to express my concerns regarding the upcoming proposed budgets. On the school side, this budget does not provide the funds we need to grow and improve as a district. The shortfalls in this budget will not provide my members what they need or deserve. It shortfalls especially heading into contract negotiations. The amazing staff in our schools provide so much to the students of Plymouth. They freely give their time to put the magic into our students' days. They put on plays, concerts, art shows, sporting events, and many more outstanding opportunities. These events do not just happen, but are built by our members volunteering their own time and giving up time with their families. These award-winning programs support the needs of our students. Our EIPC members help coordinate, support, and participate in making Plymouth schools an outstanding place to learn, and they provide the town with the educational platform that attracts growth to our town. Our school system is only as good as the staff who work there, and our staff is what adds the value to our schools, in retrospect, the value to our town. Both our staff cannot continue to give, to give without appropriate play, pay. Throughout the years, many excellent educators have decided to leave Plymouth to teach elsewhere, many times to one of our surrounding communities who will pay them more. This was clearly stated by the school administration team at the budget presentation, which is basically another form of layoffs. Members new to the educational profession are struggling to move out of their parents' homes despite having full-time jobs. Many others work nights and weekends. Our members are struggling financially. It is now time to stand up and support not only a budget we deserve, but the budget we need. The problems will not go away without a strong budget, and as Select Board John Mahoney always says, "We'll just be kicking the can down the road." So I just wanted to let everyone know, the EIPC will not stop fighting for what our members need, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Weber.
I haven't said anything yet. So hello, for the record, my name is Dale Weber, and I'm the president of the Collective Bargaining Relief Association with the acronym of COBRA. I have been honored to represent the good members of COBRA since we formed this independent organization in 2012. Prior to that, I represented the same good members that make Plymouth Run as president of a nationally-based union for over 30 years. So I've seen a lot, and I've seen a lot of change, but none more troubling and none more obvious than in recent times. More on that in a moment. COBRA represents Plymouth's frontline workers in the public service sector of America's hometown where it all began. Our members are in the Plymouth Public Schools and the area of school custodians, food service workers, and skilled tradesmen. On the town side, we represent the labor side of the Department of Public Works and their multiple divisions, including highway, water, parks, forestry, cemetery, sewer, airport, solid waste. We are also honored to represent the front-facing staff at the Plymouth Public Libraries, as well as the good school bus drivers of First Student, serving the Plymouth Public Schools, safely transporting our students, your children, to and from school, and all their extra field trips and activities. We see them first in the morning and last at the end of the day, and it's all good. As I said, we make Plymouth Run, and we strive daily to continue to do so, but it's getting more difficult to keep up with this community's needs and demands based on the growth of our town, coupled with our current inability to sustain the demands of that growth and the corresponding infrastructure needs and short staffing that is plaguing us. While the population in town during my tenure at the helm of the providers of these public services has nearly tripled in those years, our rank-and-file membership has actually diminished in that same time span. That bears repeating. Since the late 70s, our population has nearly tripled, and those that perform the public services, I stated, have diminished below the service levels of the late 70s. There has been no measurable growth to those that perform the services that we provide. So why is that, and how can this be? The only answer I have is the leaders in our community tiptoe around the budget. They tiptoe around the budget-building process so as not to tick off the taxpayers. Now, I've heard a lot of good things tonight, so far. I've heard a lot of good things, that maybe it's time to stop tiptoeing, and I encourage the board to do that. I'm not addressing the board as much as I'm addressing the public. So keep in mind that when you tick off the taxpayers, or you tiptoe around the budget building process to not tip off, tiptoe, uh, not piss off the taxpayers, of which most of the members that we represent are, repeating that again, we are not only the ones providing the frontline services, but we are taxpayers ourselves, paying for the very services we provide. It's a double-edged sword that everyone in this room has facing them every day. I don't get enough money to do my job, the only way to get more money is to raise my taxes, so we gotta live with that. The result of this tiptoeing around, real budget increase needs has compounded through the years to where we are today and where you are tonight. We are urging you tonight to vote no on this budget at this time. I already heard that you're gonna take time to review it, and so disregard that comment. But we are asking you to stop tiptoeing around, face the reality that is happening all around us. Our municipal and school employees at all levels are leaving. They are moving on. They are going to other towns and districts that are paying better wages than us. We are being poached, and that poaching only serves the poachers. Those communities have recognized the reality that it pays to develop budgets that can effectively recruit and retain employees. Why can't we do that? To recruit and retain equals rewards. Longevity is a wonderful thing. As employee representatives, we sit with your middle and upper management employees to negotiate fair and livable wages and terms of conditions of employment. We ask only for fundamental fairness. We ask for a livable pay rate. We ask to be commensurate to those similarly situated in other towns and districts doing the similar jobs that we do. We ask that you use community comparable comparisons. If you do that, you will find the reasons why we are here tonight, asking you to place a hold on this budget and do more evaluating. But I do like what I've heard so far. If you need further justification for that no vote to happen, consider this fact. Last year, the Select Board left $8.7 million in taxing capacity on the table when the tax rate was established. Whatever that strategy was that led them to do that, that strategy has certainly not set the community up for success. And what could we have done with those funds? We would not be asking for all that money for us. We would only be asking that the money that is available be distributed fairly inequitably in a manner that gives you the ability to recruit and retain a consistent workforce that makes Plymouth a community where people want to live and work. And you do not have that right now. What you have is the ability to set us in a new direction by reexamining this budget and joining with us, your workforce, to educate the taxpayer and the ratepayer that we need to collectively work towards competing in the labor market, to hold on to our employees, and stop the poaching other towns and districts are doing to us. And what does that take? It takes money. This is America's hometown. This is where it all began. We should not accept this, we should be leading the way. Let's do that, starting tonight. Please vote no on this budget, send the message, stop tiptoeing. Plymouth needs this. When the public school system and town forces get diminished, the community is diminished. Thank you for listening today.
Anyone else wishing to speak on a public comment? Okay, then. Thank you. Bring this back to the board. No vote, right, Derek? Okay, any other comments? Mr. Canty.
I just got one question.
You're not Mr. Canty, but hold on a minute.
Before you go to a vote, we're not voting.
So, in anticipation of our not voting on this tonight, but next week, you know, I've had a little bit more time to digest what we're doing with this budget than some of the others. And I think it's important to highlight that we are, I mean, my day job, I'm a public employee for the Commonwealth, so I certainly understand where the service comes from and where the, how the work gets done. So, we are putting more money towards collective bargaining than was originally anticipated by schools or could have been done by the town. So, just to make sure that that's clear, more money is going towards that. More money is going towards addressing other systemic issues. That's not the only issue, unfortunately. I wish the only issue that Plymouth was dealing with was paying its employees as much as they deserve to be paid. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. Part of the reason we don't have that luxury is because for years, we've been leaving problems unsolved, and those problems have gotten worse. And we are correcting that as well. We're not going right up to levy capacity because the town is still building and growing, and we're still dealing with a lot of dynamic situations that are beyond just town control. So, getting within two million, I think, is as close as we can responsibly get, given the size of this community, thirty-six miles of coastline, all the other issues that we're dealing with. Variable state aid, sometimes the state's doing so good with money, they're giving it back to us. Sometimes they're doing so poor, they can't even give money to fund the unfunded mandates at the level that they are doing, as Mr. Helm, I'm sure, would espouse. So, I think there's a lot of issues that we're dealing with, but we are, this budget recommendation addresses as many of them as we can in one year. Plymouth did not get into this situation that we're in overnight, and we're not gonna get out of it overnight. But we are, we are starting the first step down a road that will lead this community to a better future for everyone in it, whether you're a resident, whether you're an employee, or whether Plymouth is just a destination that you go to here and there. We are going to improve this community through steps like this, and I just encourage people to look at that and look at what we're trying to do here with this. There is gonna be an increase to people's taxes, but expenses go up over time. It's still gonna be below the state average, but it's, this is the responsible thing to do for Plymouth's future. We can't leave money like that on the table anymore while we know that there are things we're not addressing in our town. So, I look forward to being able to vote yes on this next week because we've put that thought and consideration into this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Blatter.
When you talked earlier, you said that we're giving them everything they want. Were you talking about the superintendent, or were you talking about the... We gave them everything they asked for. Who are you talking about? Is that, is that the school committee?
The school superintendent's budget has submitted, is part of this budget presentation.
Okay.
And then, in addition, sorry, in addition to that, we set aside an additional $3.6 million over and above the school department's operating budget to put towards collective bargaining.
So, what I would need to know this week, whoever wants to get in touch with me, is, obviously, your issues are with the school department. Okay? So, but you need to get us some facts. The $3.6 million for collective bargaining, will that get you closer to what you guys need? Don't tell me that tonight, but just let me know how far apart you are. And so, your issues are really are with the school, not with, you know, not with the budget that they're putting. It was the school that put this together. So, I would like to know, just see some numbers. I would like to know the salaries and how far apart they are from other towns, similar to what we did with police and fire. And I can tell you, this board, when we say we're gonna try and do something, we're gonna try and do something. We can fix every problem that I inherited two years, three years ago. We can't, and let me tell you, I won't even get into all the stuff. It was amazing, the stuff that we fixed. And it was just, okay, it's a problem, let's fix it. It might take, as Kevin says, a few years to get this straightened out, maybe a couple of contracts. But I can tell you that I wanna get you a better contract than you have now. I don't know how much better it can be, I gotta look at the numbers. And I will do that this week. So, I, I'm a big, and you guys know that, I'm a big proponent of paying fair wages 'cause I don't wanna lose our employees. It costs money every time we lose an employee, I know that. So, we're gonna do the best this week. Anybody wants to get me information, Tommy, Dale, anybody, get me information. You know I always sit down and we'll talk about it, so. And I'm gonna get with the town manager and assistant and Lynn and see how far apart we are going into this bargaining. And hopefully, the last negotiations we did a couple of years ago, everybody come out happy. Because everybody was reasonable and respectful. And that was the first time, I was told by the former human resource, first time that happened, and Lynn, Lynn was involved, that we get this done quickly, okay? Because everybody was respectful and reasonable. Everybody came to the table and asked and gave, and hopefully, this can happen, all right? We, I don't want this to be a war, because that only costs money. We don't wanna spend money on lawyers when we can give it to you guys. So, with that being said, we got a week to talk about this, so. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Be back at approximately 7:30. Welcome back. We're gonna move on to the Spring Town Meeting Warrant article discussion.
So, this agenda item is for the board to discuss any articles that you would like to sponsor for the upcoming special town meeting. If there's nothing for the board to discuss, we'll keep this on the agenda until we close it, in case it's something that the board wants to discuss.
I'm sorry, is there any board member that'd like to comment, special article? No? Okay. Mr. Helm's a no. Is Harry with us, or? No, he's gone? Okay. All righty, moving on to public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on. Mr. Lyden.
Steve Lyden. Over the years, I've been with the Visitor Service Board, and I've met with many of the businesses and organizations in the town, and one thing that keeps on coming up is that we have no sense of what our sign should be. We have all different districts, we have, you know, C. Plymouth want signs, the Downtown Businessmen Association want signs, the Cultural Historic District, and we can't come to any conclusion on what kind of sign designs we should have. So, it wouldn't be possible for the Select Board to get a group together, have representatives of each one of these groups, so they can get together and see if they can get some kind of consensus on what our sign should be and what they should look like, instead of having all this mirageary, you know, of different signs, different styles, different colors. I think it'd be great if we could get all these groups together, sit down so they can get their, you know, get some signage that'll fit the town. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on a public comment? Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on. Everett.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct Two. Two things I just wanna bring up, I don't know if they were brought up at a previous meeting earlier last month. One of them, I know, as Mr. Lyden was just talking about for Visitor Services Board, and this relates to something for the downtown that we've been doing for the past few years and throughout the rest of the town. I believe it was you, Mr. Pinto, along with former Selectwoman Betty Cavaco, that was implementing a discussion with the county sheriff for the greenhouses and the plants that we use. I don't know if that has been talked about as of late and if they are discussing that with Mr. Fiala or others, because that would be a cost savings for, it's not necessarily looking at it for any budgetary things, but an expense that doesn't need to be as expensive as it usually is, and something that actually gives character to the town. Another issue, and this has been an ongoing one for the past few months, starting probably about midsummer now, up until a few weeks ago, there's been a number of water main breaks on Cherry Street that have happened, and I am one of the properties that has been affected all three times that has happened, with expenses that have occurred as well, too, new water heater, possible new pipes and everything due to repressurization for that. I'm not looking for funds for that, and this is not where I'm going with this. What I'm going with this is, I wanna know if there is a comprehensive plan that needs to be looked at for the water mains on Cherry Street. As, is it due to just the age of them? Is it due to extra development per either cottage or other facilities? Or is it just regular wear and tear to this? I'd need to, not just myself, but other neighbors have been asking me as well, too, if this could be looked at, because this is a problem, and it has been affecting not just our everyday lives, but some of the neighbors need it critically for the actual health of their spouses that they take care of, and it is an emergency situation at times. Thank you.
Thank you. And I saw Derek writing it down, so, see what's going on, see if we can answer your questions. Anyone else? Is there anyone online? Jenny? No?
Mr. Chairman, could I bring up that?
Yep, Charlie.
Do you think we should have an agenda item for the outdoor dining? To see where we're gonna stand on that? I know that's...
Yeah, that's a good point, Mr. Blatter.
He met with the downtown with one member.
Right.
And he expressed what he thought. It didn't sound, didn't sound very positive, I didn't think, but...
Yeah, to your point, we did have a meeting. You had attended that meeting with, I think it was the president of the Downtown Business Group, so, you know, if the chairman would like, we can certainly have an agenda item in the next couple of weeks to bring a couple of different options regarding outdoor dining. I think the conversation's a little bit bigger than just the parklets. You know, there is outdoor dining on the sidewalk, and then there's furniture being left on the sidewalk, so this could have a cascade effect as to, you know, some future decision-making on what we, what you decide to allow on the public space.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Just, I would only ask that we see where the government or the state delegations feel what they're gonna do with this, if they're even gonna allow it, because if they're not, then it's kind of a mute thing. If not, then we need to have a good, long discussion about it.
Right. And I do, to that point, I do know that during that meeting that we had, if the board were to allow it, they were talking about going to VSB, and the end of the application period opens up in January, so there probably is some, some timing around having this meeting sooner rather than later.
Okay. Town managers report.
Okay. So, first off, since we're talking VSB, the receipts collected through the 6% hotel motel tax increased by 6.9% from last year. So, this year, we've collected a little north of $2.9 million in hotel motel taxes compared to last year, which is a runaround $2.7 million. And then, as you know, through a special act, 45% of the hotel motel taxes go into the promotion fund, and the balance goes into the general fund. So, we're excited to know that we're seeing increased revenues on that side. Moving into some of our projects, Stevens Field continues to move, to progress forward. I think you may know that the pickleball courts are now completed. We have a small delay right now when they were doing some more excavation, they found some old AC pipes, so this is hazardous materials that were found buried in the ground, so we've stopped all new construction until we can remove that AC pipe. That's been, that AC pipe removal's been going about two weeks now, so it's a little bit more of a challenge, I think, than they initially anticipated. So, I'll keep you posted on that. The Bartlett Road Bridge is officially closed, so as you know, that bridge is under reconstruction, and we're expecting it to be closed until about April 1st. So, we've notified all the abuders, we put signboards out there, so the neighborhood is well aware of that bridge closure. As far as the CPC update, the Rocky Hill Road parcel has been closed, the Rocky Pond parcel has been closed, Town Council has draft agreements, grant agreements for the Pilgrim Hall roof project, and then the renovations to the Center for the Arts project as well. So, those projects are moving forward, and there is an amended grant agreement with the Housing Authority for their project as well. So, all those CPC articles that were approved in October are moving forward and progressing extremely well. Station Two, this is our fire station over at West Plymouth, is on track and under budget. I'll say that again, on track and under budget. We are expecting to have a move-in date the week of the 16th for our firefighters, and then we are planning, as soon as we finish the landscaping in the spring, to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony sometime in spring, as soon as the outside work is complete. As we all know, there's a big election on January 13th that's taking place, so this is for the NIP ban. Early voting, as I reported last week or two weeks ago, will begin on January 6th here in Town Hall, over at the glass lobby over at the atrium. That'll be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So, again, it's January 6th, which is a Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then we... So again, it's January 6th, which is a Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then we will take Sunday off. We will continue early voting on the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th, and early voting will take place during the typical Town Hall hours, those three days. And then we'll move into the election on the 13th, which all polling locations will be open, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. One item of note is Precinct 11, which always voted at the airport location, has now been moved to the Federal Furnace Elementary School. Signboards in the next week or so will be placed throughout town. In fact, we identified probably about a dozen places throughout the town where we will be advertising the January 13th election. And then the last item I have to report is that tomorrow evening, the Historic Commission will be holding a public hearing on the district expansion. So those folks that are interested, again, here in Town Hall, the 6:30 PM, the public hearing will take place. If you're interested as to where the district will be expanded to, we have a map on the town website that denotes the neighborhoods that will now be a part of the new historic district. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions or comments for Derek? Seeing none.
I got one, one comment. Derek, is Kelly gonna be using any electronic signs to get the vote up?
Yeah, so electronic signboards are gonna be placed throughout the community.
Do you know where they're gonna be?
Oh, it's, we identified probably about a dozen locations this morning. I could get you the exact list.
Okay, yeah.
But she's working with the DPW Fire Department to get those signboards out, but everywhere, from South Plymouth all the way up to North Plymouth, in public locations.
Okay. Thanks.
But we can get you that list.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. We talked about it this morning at staff.
Yeah, thanks.
Any members have anything on their new business? Derek, there's a, was a letter in my packets from Mr. Enos, the Waterset Association, the, you know what I'm referring to?
I don't think I've seen that letter yet, but I'm happy to take a look at it.
She was very active in the whole thing, Russell Mills Pond and, I just wanna make sure she's in the loop with whatever they're gonna do with the public and letting them know, because I think, you know, that some of her concern, some of the people over there, Mr. Withington was in last week or the week before.
We can reach out to her. I'll take another look at that letter. We have a meeting this Thursday.
Okay.
With a number of concerned community residents regarding the EEF project, so I'll take a look at this. Ms. Rushford has been invited, Mr. Malaguti's been invited, and a number of others in that area have been invited to the meeting.
And some of the history.
Yep.
Right.
Can I ask a question on that? Has that been litigated?
No.
Wasn't that in litigation? No?
No.
Oh, okay.
This is the plan that they brought up to us a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, sorry.
So if you don't have it, I have it, and, you know, we'll get it unless, and anything on the old business? Nope, seeing none. I'm just gonna touch momentarily on the tragedy we had in our town on Christmas Eve. We lost a three-month-old infant to Phillips family, and the community's banded together. There's a GoFundMe. We're supporting them at work, but if there's anybody in the community, I say it here because not everybody has Facebook. We're looking to help, have been all sorts of ways, whether it be food, donations, I can't even begin to fathom what they're going through. So we reached out to them over the weekend, and we're gonna stand behind them and solicit for them, and if there's anybody in the community that wants to do anything or give anything, give us a call or stop by, whatever you wanna do is fine. There's also a GoFundMe, I don't have the address with me, 'cause, but I can get it for you if you contact me or someone at work. And there was more than one tragedy Christmas Eve. I, you know, I always put out a thank you to the first responders and to the people that are always working, and I always wonder, you know, they're out there working. It just goes to show, when I talk to the chief, that there was, there was more than one tragedy Christmas Eve, so, but that one really hit home. My thoughts and prayers go out to them. That being said, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for watching. See you next week.